Thank you for joining us this evening for the June 7, 2022 Montessorino City Council regular meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and then able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you're allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 35 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and be read into a paper. This word limit is set to here to click for three minutes time limits. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen but not provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, although this meeting will be taken by yourself.
Thank you. I call the meeting to order. I guess we start with the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Turner, would you be kind enough to recite the pledge of allegiance for us or leaders in the pledge?
Your.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's much appreciated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Luton.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Potemekich.
Present.
Mayor Awahi.
Present.
And councilmember Lawler is absent. We have a form.
You. Orders of the day. Does anybody wish to change any of the order of business that's on the agenda? Please let me know. Does any member of the public wish to change the order of the items that is on the agenda? There you go. I guess we'll proceed with the agenda as set forth. Are there any presentations?
No presentations.
Okay, then we get to oral communications. Any oral communications?
There are no hands. Actually, there is one, Mr. Philip Levine.
Hello? You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. Sorry to bother you guys again. My, my wife says I'm stubborn, but I like to say I'm persistent. I'm following up again on the same old issue, 15821 Poppy Lane. I was trying to avoid this. I sent a letter to the attorney, the lawyer, and to remind you, I've stopped at the city hall twice. I've sent five emails and I simply, simply want to have a meeting with the city, with the, with the city manager, but they're basically, excuse my language, giving me the middle finger and ignoring me. I don't feel that's acceptable. I know we have a member from Intel who I've shared and we also have a member from a top four accounting firm. You don't need to go to either one of those to know that people need to loop back for good service. It's not rocket science, guys. Basically, the issue again was, in my opinion, they put in a wall that was non-authorized. The city manager claimed, he told me multiple times, that it was under code. I've never formally been told that by a city representative. Councilmember Turner was good enough to get, it was per code, and I also found out in a city meeting. A citizen doesn't have to go through that to get a simple meeting or shouldn't have to go through that. The last meeting we had, I thought we got sidetracked on communication methodology. I think the electronics is a really good way to follow up, but I'd like to remind everybody the basic courtesy of following up when someone asks a question that doesn't take an app. You know, whether it be telex or semaphores, as I told the, told the lawyer, or even with a handwritten wax sealed message. If someone asks you a question, if you want to be courteous, you get back to them, and the city's never done that. Bottom line is, I have never been told why the addition of a wall meets code. I'm sure structurally the wall might need code. This was never authorized by the, by the Architectural Council. I simply want to know how can such a major change, which is an architectural, architecturally significant, be made without the public being notified in a proper way? And why I can't get a simple meeting with the city manager, possibly with his engineer, explaining me in clear language why this meets code in a successful city for a contract to make a proactive change without notifying the neighborhood? I think that's common courtesy. I can't take no for an answer. The thing I can't take, though, is no explanation and why the no happened. I don't think that's professional and it's definitely not good service. I appreciate your time. You guys did a wonderful job researching the difficult housing issue. I applaud you on that. No magic answers, but if you're serious about service, don't fall back on software, even though it's important. You can do that no matter if it's with telex or semaphore. I just want a simple meeting and after your help. I don't want to have to come back and I really appreciate your time and thank you very much for serving and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you bringing it up to council. I understand we do have an operation executive committee and press council over Turner and I think councilmember Little is on that committee. Who's on the operation executive committee, I guess? There's two people on that committee. And operations and outreach committee, councilmember Turner and councilmember Lawler. So if they've had a chance to follow up on it, it sounds like councilmember Turner has, then that would be helpful maybe between you and them and the city manager. You guys can sit down and get this figured out. Councilmember Turner, did you want to add anything to that? You're on mute.
Oh, yes, I did talk to the city manager and asked him to contact Mr. Levine several times in fact.
Thank you for doing that.
Take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink the water.
Okay, well, the horse is probably can answer for himself also, I guess. And I don't mean call anybody a horse right now. Is, staff, did you want to, do you want to respond to that?
Mr. Julian Artis is not in the meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Julian Artis is on vacation this week, so I would possibly recommend doing a formal meeting set up between yourself and councilmember Lawler and Mr. Philip and the city manager and see if this can be resolved. I think that would be helpful. All right. Any other oral communication?
There are no other hands up. Yeah.
All right, any written communication?
No written communication.
All right, we'll move to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to have any, does anybody want any item to pull off the consent calendar? These items, one through six. Don't hear that from council. How about anybody in the public? Does anybody wish to pull any item off the consent calendar? You're in none, then I would like to see if we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So.
I'll second that. A motion by Mayor Potemekich and second by also with Luther, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Luton?
Yes.
Mayor Potemekich.
I.
And Mayor Awahi.
I.
And motion passes for zero.
Thank you. So now we get to public hearings, unfinished business. I guess there's no unfinished business. We have new business. The first item is consider and appoint members to the 2022, 23 Montreal Youth Commission, and I believe we have a staff report.
Mayor and council, good evening. This is Michelle Esteban, city clerk. Before you are applications for the 2022, 23 youth commission. Youth commission, youth, for the 2022, 23 youth commission, we received a total of six applicants and four of the six applicants are incumbents and that is the extent of my second thing. Let me be able to throw the questions you may have.
You said something about four of the six?
I believe four of the six.
Are what?
Are incumbents. They're current.
Sorry.
They're incumbents, yes.
Are any of those individuals present at this time?
No, we don't have any of them present.
Okay, and I assume efforts were made to let them know that it would be great if they could show up.
Yes, I did let them know, so they were aware of the meeting tonight and the potential appointment at tonight's meeting.
Yeah, it would be nice if people were applying. It would actually show up so we can kind of have a chance to review them a little bit better.
I also like to note that the youth commission has up to 15 position, can appoint up to 15 commissioners. We received six. I would also like to recommend that the council extend the recruitment to allow additional applicants to apply for the commission so we can obtain as many commissioners to fill those 15 seats as possible. The first meeting of the 22, 23 school year would be September 13. So I, staff is recommending that we extend the recruitment to at least mid-August with potential appointment at the August 16 council meeting.
All right, appreciate that. I didn't quite see that recommendation. I guess maybe I'm missing it. It's to extending the time, because I know you've extended it previously, but I don't know if it was for this cycle or that was for last cycle. We almost seem to always extend it. So I guess the first order of business is for any questions anybody has of staff. And hearing none, how about any member of the public, if they have any questions of staff? No questions, so we can go back to any discussion on the subject matter? Any participation in discussion, a couple of ideas, one is to. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just reading the staff report. It says appoint the five applicants, but we have six. Is that correct?
That is a misprint. It should be six. I apologize for that.
No, no problem. I am very pleased that we've got two new applicants and they look really, all the candidates look good. I believe that we should extend the deadline because it would be great to have as many youth commissioners on the youth commission as possible. We've governed for up to 15 and perhaps Michelle, you could explain what happens if we have, if we don't change the number of, of positions relative to what a quorum would be. Could you just explain that for a moment, please?
And what do you mean by that? If we, we just have the six?
That is correct.
If we just have the six, then the quorum, we would need a quorum of four to hold the meeting.
Okay, so it's, it has nothing to do with the number of positions. It only has to do with the number of commissioners that are appointed. Is that correct?
That is correct. Last, last year, we did not have all 15 seats filled. We had a total of nine filled with one residing, or not residing, but stopped showing up. So we had eight for the majority of last year's youth commission. So in order for us to hold a meeting, we needed a quorum of five to attend. So we would just practice the same for this year. If we don't have all 15 seats filled, whatever the quorum of that number we have would be required to, to hold a meeting.
Understood. And then six members are from last year. Were there some people, some commissioners that were on the commission last year that chose not to apply this year, but they could have applied?
No, all four commissioners, the incumbents that are identified in the staff report were commissioners last year. Those who did not reapply were because they were seniors and are off to college. So those who are eligible to continue on the youth commission did apply, reapply.
Okay, well, that's, that's great to know. Thank you so much. I appreciate that and yeah, again, I think we should extend the deadline and we should try to get as many commissioners as possible.
Thank you for that. Anything else, Mayor Potemekich?
No.
Okay, councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to suggest something else too. One of the things we can do is accept all six. And if we get more applications, then we can vote on the ones coming in. And, and this way, you know, they can start working as youth commissioners. That's another alternative.
Any other questions? Councilmember Luther, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to agree with what councilmember Turner said. I, I think we should, and Mayor Potemekich, I think we should extend the deadline, but I would suggest that as we recruit, as we get new applications, we bring them up on whichever meeting we have next so that we can bring them on as quickly as possible. I know the youth commission often helps with the picnic. So if we can bring people in kind of as the applications come in, in ones and twos, but continue the outreach through our existing commissioners as well as through Nextdoor and potentially if there are any school organizations, other ways that we can outreach, we might want to look into that. So okay, yeah, with that, I would make a motion to extend the deadline to accept the six that have applied and to bring back any new applications as quickly as possible so that we can get people seated on the youth commission. That's my motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
So, so we're basically suggesting not setting any deadlines for future people who apply? And just, they're going to apply anytime they want? I wanted to understand that motion, because I think it's helpful to set some deadlines.
So I think the deadline will be, we're going to have to look at this again, latest, either last meeting in August or first meeting in September to close it out. But that we should be accepting applications of qualified people at the first available meeting as they come in. So it would be a final deadline to apply, but we would take people as they come in and consider them on each meeting that comes up so that we could seat people as quickly as possible if they're qualified.
Well, thank you for clarifying. All right, so the motion is basically to accept all six that have applied as commissioners to extend the deadline for others to apply through the last meeting in August and, and to consider applications as they come in at the, at the very next meeting that is being held as soon as, you know, coming in time for the, to be on the agenda for a follow-up meeting. Would that be your motion, Mayor Potemekich?
No, that's, I second that motion from councilmember Luther.
Okay, councilmember Luther, would that be your motion? All right, so please, roll call, please.
Okay, councilmember Turner?
Yes, sorry.
All right, councilmember Luton?
Yes.
Mayor Potemekich?
I.
And Mayor Awahi.
I.
And motion passes for zero.
Thank you. All right. That was an important matter. I think the emphasis is, has to be to, to get the commissioners to show up at meetings and everything else. Councilmember Lawler is not here, so I think she'll be pleased with that resolution.
And also with meetings expecting to be in person after July 1st. We hope that participation with the commission will be better this time around, so.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. And so we go to the next item, which is adopting a resolution regarding the general municipal election, requesting services of the electoral voters, requesting consolidation of elections, specifying certain policies and procedures for the consolidated elections, determining to levy a cost of candidate statements requiring payment of candidate filing fee provided for during the course of the election. So, and send us a staff report on that.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman Michelle Esteban, city clerk here again to speak on this agenda item. In order for the city of Montessorino to consolidate its municipal election with the Senate or County Register of Voters and request election services, the city council must adopt a resolution requesting these services and specify the matter in which the election services shall be administered. Most election matters are regular, are regulated by the California Elections Code. However, one of the items left at the discretion of the city council is levying, waiving, or subsidizing the cost of the optional candidate statement. The candidate statement is an optional 200-word paragraph that a candidate may choose to have printed in the county's voter guide. The register of voters have given our, the city of Montessorino, an estimated cost of $2,400 for each candidate statement to be printed in the November 8th election voter guide. The city council has historically chosen to charge the full cost of the candidate statements to candidates filing nomination paperwork and staff recommends that that continues. I'd like to turn it over to city attorney Rudy to speak on the conflict of interest related to that.
So FPPC regulations require that if a decision may result in a financial benefit or loss of more than $500 to any official voting on it, that that official should recuse. Now, I understand that this may impact certain council members who may or may not be choosing to run. If you are considering running and you think you may be financially impacted by this decision, I would recommend that you recuse. Additionally, if that means that we don't have a quorum, our city clerk will have to pick a council number at random for the purposes of getting a quorum on this item.
Thank you, attorney Rudy. And that refusal has to do with the entire matters that are being discussed or only the issue of the $2,400 penalty charge?
That would have to do with the candidate filing cost. So if we want to make a decision on that separately, we certainly can. But because this resolution, because the action that the city is being asked to do, to take is to adopt the resolution, which also sets forth that requirement and calls for the election, it's going to be a little bit difficult for us to separate that.
All right, so I guess the first, first question to ask for every council member here to consider is if they're going to be running for election, then they need to recuse themselves, basically, right?
Yeah, if you, if you think that you are likely to be affected by this decision financially, you don't have to necessarily announce today you're running. If you think that there's a chance you might run and you'd like to recuse that of safety, that's perfectly fine too.
I will also have to recuse, but just to do my, I guess, Mayor Potemekich, you need to take over, because I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
And I will also recuse on this, so that will leave us with the non-quorum. I'm not sure and if the clerk wants to flip a coin and pull one of us back in to get a quorum or how you want to handle this.
I have two names and a piece of paper. I'm going to throw it in my little pot.
Shake it up.
Shake it up and one second. Councilmember Luton is who I have.
All right. So we've got three council members that are voting and the mayor has recused himself. And are there, do I take public comment on this?
I would recommend you take public comment if there are no further questions from council members.
Any other questions from council members on this? No, then any comments from the public on this?
There are no here, please.
Okay, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Any, any other discussion on this item? No? Then if I may have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll go ahead and put forward the motion, I guess.
Councilmember Luther puts forward the motion. I will second the motion. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Luton?
Yes.
And Mayor Potemekich?
I, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good job, Mayor Potemekich. So I guess I'm back on, on the line here. Next item is the discussion and constitution of forming a housing element update ad hoc committee and appointment of ad hoc committee members. And this is staff report, so please go ahead. And this is the staff report.
And you wanted to check that?
Sure. Good evening. This is Diana Perkins. I am the city planner. And this idea of the ad hoc committee was brought up at the council meeting two weeks ago, where we had a joint meeting with the city council and the site and architectural commission. The site and architectural commission did set up their own ad hoc committee at their meeting last week. And this item tonight is an opportunity for the council to do the same. And that completes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And could you let us know who were on the ad hoc members of the site and architecture?
For site and architecture, it is the chair, Stephen White, and Commissioner Pallavi Sharma.
I think those are the people that volunteered at our joint meeting.
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Councilmember Luther?
Thank you. I just wanted to verify, it looked like on the consent calendar we approved some additional funds for EMC to help out with preparing the materials that would then go into any surveys or mailers or so forth. Is that correct?
That is correct, and those would be as-needed services, so as deemed necessary by the ad hoc committees.
Okay, great. And, and I noticed in there also, it said that the, the budget and the as-needed on that looked like it did not include distribution costs or, or physical distribution. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for those clarifications. And with that, I guess I will wait until we've had the rest of the comments. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? If not, we go to the public. Any member of the public have any questions of staff on this particular item? Doesn't look like it, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Mayor Potemekich?
Yeah, if I recall correctly, at our joint meeting, I believe I volunteered and we were going to wait until we had an actual publicly noticed hearing on this, so I would volunteer.
Thank you. And councilmember Luther?
Yeah, thanks. I, I had also volunteered to be involved with this last time. I'm happy to take it forward. I'm also happy to let anyone else do that along the way. I think it is going to be important whoever is on this committee to work really closely with EMC as well as site and architecture to make sure that we get a serious FAQ out to the citizens so that they really understand what it is we're accomplishing. And I, what I understand, what we're looking to accomplish here is to, to really get people to sign serious expressions of interest. That will have to be fine-tuned a little bit, but something beyond a general expression of interest, but something that is not actually a commitment and that we really need to let people know that we're looking for using this to, if things work out between potential SB9 builds and ADUs to, to come up with better than 192, 193 units plus a, maybe another 5% or something. In addition, because what we're, we're really looking for is can this fulfill the housing element so that we don't have to rezone? And if we're not able to do that, then we're going to be back at rezoning and we're going to be looking at certainly various neighborhoods not happy about their rezoning or potential rezoning. So I think it's going to be really critical to get the expression, get the FAQ and then find a way to hit the streets and, and get volunteers to go door to door, get a good flyer that explains things and make sure that we can get these responses and that they're positive for anybody who might consider building in the next eight years. So, so those are my thoughts. If I can help with that, I'm happy to. If others are interested in dedicating the time necessary to do this with EMC. necessary to do this with EMC's help uncomfortable that it can be developed. And if there's questions at the uh committee can bring it back for the full input from everybody in a public meeting, uh, if uh if all of our input is desired so that we can don't have Brown Act violations. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Yeah, this this is really gonna be a critical effort and maybe the first time that the council is going out you know, and really trying to reach uh every one of our citizens, see what they want to do. So that's good. Uh, councilmember Turner, you have your answer.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh ask Diana about our our timetable here. I think you said that the next meeting um for the housing element will be June twenty first, right?
Correct. So at the June twenty first um meeting, we are planning to bring a draft of the housing element policies and programs to the council um and ask for the um okay for the draft element to be routed, um, I'm sorry, made available for the public viewing um as it does need to be available for thirty days. So trying to take advantage of the council's um July break to have the um thirty day public review period and then bring um the final document with comments back to the council in August. And that's for the draft element.
Okay, okay, good. I just want to be sure that we let the public know uh, so that they can attend because that's a requirement from HCD.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
So so to to uh, Ms. Perkins, to do that element of the draft element, don't you need feedback from the public before that date? So you know what should go in there?
So we will, um, the draft element will be published based on the council's direction. Um, it will be available for thirty days for public comment. Um, there is then a ten day period um where the comments would be incorporated into um the draft element or addressed. Um, and the council um, as I mentioned, in August, um, we're scheduled to bring that final draft to council in August. And it will then be submitted to HCD for review. So concurrently with that, you know, this outreach would be happening. It doesn't have to be completed by August. It would need to be completed by December for the final element, but the draft will lay out um to the state what our plan is.
No, I I appreciate that. I appreciate your timelines, and I'm trying to see if you can give the head of committee a timeline, but I wish they should get their work done. So that ECM or who is doing the planning, the draft, has that feedback and, you know, prepares a plan according to that, otherwise they're running out on their own, doing their thing, and we're trying to find out what the public wants, and you know, at some some point, those two things have to mesh. So is it is there a timetable you can give the committee? So when you expect them to start and when when they should be able to finish? And what is, when the resources will be available to them to do whatever, they need to find out what the citizens want.
So um, my plan was to, after tonight's meeting, to send an email to um the ad hoc committee members to set up the first meeting and see um, sort of the the direction everybody wants to take, and then we can lay out the timeframe from there.
Excellent. Yeah, you've got a pretty aggressive agenda, I'm sure. The committee will be happy to uh, do what, you know, they they seem to be very committed. Uh, councilmember Turner, you still have your hand up? Did you have a follow up question?
Yes, I have a follow up question. I I wanted to be sure uh if you were aware that we cannot include SB nine homes in our housing element.
So we cannot include an assumption
Yes.
of the number of SB nine units. If we have specific interest, documented interest from property owners, we can include that.
Well, I think you better double check. Can you double check on that?
Definitely.
Okay.
Anything else, councilmember Turner?
That's it. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions of staff? I think we saw the question stay at this point. I'm just saying, okay. Uh, no further questions. We go to the public. I don't believe I have on this issue. Does any member of the public have any questions of staff on this issue? It's a housing element update. All right, so then we bring it back for discussion. And uh, this is a discussion item. It's not a motion. I don't think we need on it, right? So any further discussions on this subject? Oh, yeah, no, we do have a need a motion because you have to point the ad hoc committee. So we have uh, councilor Luthold and Mayor Potemekcheck volunteering for this, so if I can have a motion to appoint those two as members of this ad hoc committee. And uh, and the SNA has already got two members. It'll be a four member ad hoc committee. So if I could have a motion on that, please.
So moved.
A second.
Go ahead and second.
All right.
How, oh, sorry.
Second from customer Turner on this. All right. Is uh, that was a second from your turn. Councilmember Turner, that was a second.
Yes, yes.
So councilmember Turner is a second, so let's go ahead and take a roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mechacheck?
Hi.
And Mayor Lahe.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, so we are now on item number four. Which is a considering a doctor resolution setting the appropriation limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and I understand this is staff report, so please go forward with that.
Thank you, Mayor Lahe, uh, and city council members. This is Reynolds Samranas, finance officer for the city. Uh, staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution setting the appropr- appropriations limit for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three based upon the price factor and population data provided by the State of California Department of Finance. Um, let's see, the price factor, according to that memo, is seven point five five percent. And the population data uh was point zero zero eight seven or eighty-seven basis points. So based on those factors, uh, we're going from seven million four eighty-four, four oh nine to a new limit of eight million one one nine eight three five. And so um in our current proposed budget or considered budget, we're at a level of five million seven sixty-three oh ninety-eight, which is approximately two point four million below that limit. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And uh, are there any questions of staff? Uh, council member Luthold?
Thank you. Um, I guess I uh don't quite understand um the resolution. Um, I see, and maybe, maybe it was just that I didn't read the explanation in the staff report that closely. Uh, but I see in the resolution um that it has the appropriations limit at eight million. And then the appropriations limit in item three at five point seven and the appropriations limit um at two point three. So I don't understand why there are three different numbers there. Are we supposed to pick one of those or or is there some reason that there are three sentences that look the same to me with different numbers?
Oh, okay. Yeah, the clarification on that is the eight million one one nine, eight point one million is the number that you should not exceed with respect to uh appropriating uh expenses. And so right now, we're looking at um on the proposed draft budget, we're looking at approximately five point eight million in terms of appropriations. And so that's just verifying that uh we are below the eight point one limit.
I guess I'm I'm looking at the resolution. I don't really understand um really the wording of item three. And then also why the two point three million uh, oh, the the appropriations under limit. Um, is our three and four simply advisory math information? Or is that uh suggesting some sort of approval that then relates to the budget? And if the budget comes back at five point eight or five point six uh, that there's then uh discrepancy with this uh that creates uh some lack of sense to it. Um, is there some reason why we don't just set the maximum appropriation limit and then go to our budget as a separate item? Why do we even need three and four in the resolution?
Oh, um, I guess I'm copying what was done in prior years. I think it's, I I think the the point is, is that uh, that we don't exceed the eight point one million. And so the other two numbers, it's just, for me, I guess it's notification or uh advisory that here's where we are on our proposed budget, and we are indeed below that eight point one million. So I guess if it's more appropriate to remove items three and four, then we can certainly uh do that. But I'm just, I was just referencing what was done in prior years.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I would ask the city attorney whether there's any reason why we shouldn't remove three and four. I mean, certainly, we don't, we, I think one reason to have three is to say we're obviously not appropriating eight million. We don't want to scare anybody with that. Um, we're simply recognizing that that is an established limit. But I also, um, since we haven't gotten to the budget item and won't uh officially clear the budget for a while, um, I didn't uh like actually establishing the appropriations limit as a five point seven. Um, giving either the impression that we're going to approve that number or that we are uh not going to go over that number at this point, so um, because the city attorney have any comment about whether we should just simply remove three and four or state that those are advisory numbers pending the final budget? How is the best way to handle that?
I would simply remove three and four. And in your motion to approve, you can say uh motion to approve the resolution uh omitting uh sections three and four.
All right, thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other council member have any questions of staff? Councilor, Mayor Potemekcheck?
Yeah, so this has to be done every year and what's the deadline that it has to be uh, completed by?
I know there's a timeframe.
That's a question for our attorney.
Uh, I believe it coincides with the adoption of the budget. Uh, let me double check this. I don't know that off of the top of my head.
Oh, okay, I um i- if uh I'm, that's the end of my questioning, and you can take public comment, and it it doesn't really affect anything, the timing.
Any other questions from council? Uh, yeah, I I I think if you set the limit at the eight million one one nineteen, our budget doesn't appear to get any really close to that. So we could probably establish that limit without getting the budget approved first. I think we probably have enough for March in there. Would be my, I I guess that's our questions or comments. Let me go to questions from the public first. Any member of the public wishes to comment on the appropriation agenda item? There are no hands, so let's go back to council for discussion and comments, and I just made my first comment that the budget uh is not going to be close to the eight million appropriation limit. Uh, any other comments?
My only comment would, well, I'd make a motion to uh adopt the resolution as amended uh by removing items three and four.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Go ahead and second that.
Okay, council member Luthold, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Neefold?
Yes.
Mayor Potemekcheck?
Hi.
And Mayor Lahe?
Hi.
Your motion passes four zero.
Next agenda item. That's to do with the reviewing. This is gonna be a second review of the fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three uh budget and to provide directions to staff. And I'm saying this is a staff report, so please go ahead. Some more?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lahe, uh, city council members. Yeah, I prepared uh an analysis based on our discussion last May seventeenth regarding our uh study session on the FY two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And from that uh meeting, I summarize what the net changes are um from that. And so if I just uh run down the uh, the income statement, and I'll just read off uh let's see, so I'm on page. You want me to share my screen? Would that be better? Or just read, or just read off my analysis?
You you can share your screen if you don't mind.
Okay, when I do that. So, just going down the summary of, uh, this is comparing what I presented. Uh, let me show you the uh, the titles here. So I'm looking at this uh middle column here. This is the new revised version versus the study session that we had last May seventeen.
When you saw the middle column is the
Yeah, the middle column is, if you can see my cursor, see this, my cursor. So this is the new version that I'm uh discussing today. The uh peach color is what um what I presented last uh May seventeen. And then, of course, the gold is what I present, what was the mid-year budget. So essentially, the changes that I made is in looking at the first item. I increased uh road impact fee estimate based on the nine month year-to-date run rate um from uh, from this year's uh activity. And so I increased that estimate by a hundred fifty-two thousand, bringing it to two eighty. In the um mid-year budget, uh, that totaled uh four eighty-six. And then on the expenditure side, um, there were just a couple items that uh council members uh asked me to look at. So the first item, again, same same columns, if I can somehow make this a little smaller. Can everyone read that? Okay, so the first one, the first change was police services for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. I increased that amount to a million uh, one million ten thousand six oh four based on a memo I received from the city of Los Catos Police Department saying what their budget is. So that new number is one million one ten. The next item is uh community support. You had a long discussion on uh who we should uh donate money to. Um, that number actually decreased by five thousand. And I have a listing of what was finally decided upon on the uh county support that we would be giving it to. Uh, it was K Kat, five thousand, West Valley Community Services, five thousand AWO, one thousand, art decades docents of Los Catos, two thousand, Los Catos Community Concerts, one thousand, Los Catos Music and Arts, three thousand, Sustainable Walls, uh, three thousand, totaling twenty thousand. And then the next item was um a cert, let's see, this was uh five hundred. It's embedded in, it's also included in general, in the general government. I actually increased that by five hundred. This is that cert item that uh Rowena mentioned. Um, basically, it's cert under the direction of Los Catos Mono-Sereno Police Department has identified cert neighborhoods and is establishing, establishing neighborhood incident command posts to assist cert members with emergency response efforts during a disaster. So I increased it to twelve thousand five hundred. I think in the last go round, I had uh twelve thousand. The next item, city attorney. I increased that to um by eighty-two thousand. And the reason for that was I adjusted up uh city attorney services by two thousand. Uh, I made that two, I brought it to eighty-five thousand total. And then litigation, other legal services, I increased that for fifty thousand for a pending settlement of a case. And then finally, I also increased it by thirty thousand for new litigation um that uh may come up. So now I'm projecting total legal expenses to be about two hundred fifty thousand. And then finally, equipment improvements. Um, I looked into the C Click Fix Annual Licensing Fee. I originally had it in at five thousand. It turns out that new invoice, I I received the invoice the other day, the new invoice for that is actually ten thousand five hundred. So I increased that by about five thousand. And then finally, on the uh, the West Valley Clean Water Authority, um, I think this was um a question that was asked regarding the fee for that. Um, yes, it it did increase to thirty-three thousand two seventy-two, so I adjusted the um proposed budget to uh by twenty-one thousand. And so net, when you take the increase of a hundred fifty-two thousand in revenues plus the plus the increase in expenditures, one twenty-three, we actually picked up, uh, twenty-nine thousand of, um, surplus that goes to our fund balances. And so that really concludes my report. So from this, I am looking to city council to give, uh, staff further guidance if they want me to explore any other changes before I prepare the, um, proposed, uh, budget for next time.
Thank you, sir. And let's see, questions, uh, also overturn.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Summer Onus, can you please go to page one of fourteen on sales tax? Yeah, you, you have a column here that's nine hundred and nine thousand, one hundred.
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, your question?
Oh, yes. So that, does that include the one thou, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand in grants?
Yes, and here's the detail behind that. Uh, let's see. Yeah, I was supposed to change the title from just sales tax to federal grants. And so what's included in there is, um, well, a sales tax of twelve thousand. But behind the eight ninety-seven, you have eighteen thousand for this Silicon Valley Clean Energy. You have Prop sixty-eight, uh, per capita program of a hundred eighty. And then we have, um, it's a combination of, uh, the relief funds, uh, totaling in this case, uh, it's actually six ninety-eight.
Well, can, can, can I ask my question first, though? Um, when we approved the six hundred thousand for the annex, we were told that there was just under two hundred thousand in grants to apply against that six hundred thousand. Is this hundred and ninety-eight thousand that grant money that was supposed to be applied to the annex?
Let me confirm on my, uh, my other list here. Yes, so a hundred ninety-eight. Uh, yes, a hundred ninety-eight, six hundred, uh, was meant for the annex building.
Okay, so that includes it then?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, if you don't mind, can we go to page seven of fourteen? Under expense budget? Okay, so here you have a construction of one thousand dollars. Can you tell us what that's for?
Storm drain project.
I'm sorry?
I put it down as storm drain project. So that's any miscellaneous.
By these things rather than putting construction maintenance. If, if, if you can actually be a little bit more transparent and add more clarity, that would kind of help. Uh, let me, let me get, get back to page seven. Uh, if you look at that, you have maintenance of nine hundred seventy-five thousand. Is, is that pavement maintenance? See, you have, you have.
Yes.
Yes, so can you clarify that to say pavement maintenance? And then you have your building maintenance, right? And, and at the last meeting, we discussed putting, separating that, because I assume that's six hundred thousand for the annex, right?
Yes, that's one thing I forgot.
Please, can you, can you clarify that a little bit so that our, our residents are more aware and are more transparent?
Okay, I will.
And there's a hundred seventy-five thousand uh, from that six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and what is that for? Is that for the landscaping?
Yeah, part of that, let's see, I have to go to my detail on that. I'm sorry, bear with me here. So the one of that number, let's see, one eighty-six, one eight sixty. So part of it is the city hall parking lot retrofit, a one twenty-five. And new CIP project, let's see, two or three CG is. One twenty-five. And ten thousand, see, ten thousand for maintenance of the grounds. Five thousand for tree maintenance.
Mr. Semerance, I think councilor Turner really, and I think, uh, we asked the same questions last time. To get these things clarified. It sounds like you probably need a little time to get this thing. So it's presentable in a manner so that things do break out. So if you just say construction or just say building maintenance without breaking it down. And I know you break it down in later pages, but sometimes that even gets jumbled up. So, uh, you may want to go back and listen to the last, uh, meeting you had to see the things that needed clarified and what council member Turner is saying right now. So I, I would suggest at this time, councilor Turner, please continue with any other questions you may have.
Yes, I do have some more questions, please. May I ask them?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, page ten of fourteen. Hey, you have total expense of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty. And it looks like seventy percent of that is contract services. Could you, um, break that down as well? Uh, as to what contract services we have? Uh, I would also like to, to make sure that when we have contract services or bids, that we have signature from city staff before we execute a contract as well. So if you could break that down, what is seventy percent? Does that include by car EMC? Uh, are we still paying Mr. Keeson? So please, please make that a little bit more clear. I would appreciate that. And then, of course, the one is the last, my, my last comment is page eleven of fourteen. At our last budget sessions meeting, um, I wanted this laid out. We have separate building maintenance and new construction. That's page eleven of fourteen. And if you could include those, those comments in our next, uh, budget session, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
If you call some current, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilor Luton?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so Mr. Samronus, a couple of things I have, um, the first one relates to the last that Ms. Turner just brought up. Um, and that is, um, on the building maintenance section, you've got there on page eleven. I would think more naturally, certainly the building and grounds construction. Uh, and, and I believe most of that one fifty-five, a hundred and twenty or something of that one fifty-five was, uh, parking lot project. To me, those are capital improvements, not building maintenance. And so I'm wondering whether we need new codes for that, um, and whether we can, we can just make very clear so that the public knows this is not some random maintenance thing that somehow is very expensive. Uh, but this is indeed a capital project that is going to increase the value of the city's, uh, um, assets. And I'm also wondering how we would carry that on our books, because to me, uh, certainly from a business perspective, a capital improvement that then carries on your books is something completely different than the sunk cost of, of, um, just a maintenance type thing of, of fixing a tree or, or even potentially restriping pavement or things like that, that are, that are much more in the maintenance world. So, uh, Mr. Samronus, uh, if you can bring us your expertise in the uh, government world, but also to help bridge, as we speak to mostly business people, uh, who are our residents, uh, so that we can make it very clear to them. I think the, the level of breakout and having these headings really accurate, as Ms. Turner brings up, will be very helpful. So those.
Yes, yes, that's, that's absolutely correct. In fact, um, I'm going to move this particular item over to here, equipment, uh, slash improvements, which is here at, uh, oh, and eight fifteen, which are all capitalized, uh, items.
Okay, and I would. Make those changes. Making it clear that it is, that it is in fact a capitalized item, um, and, and referring, for example, to the annex. Um, uh, when, and if approved in full after bids come in, um, that that would be a capital improvement, not, not just a random expense that we're putting in the budget, also that it's non-recurring, I guess, is the other aspect that I want to make sure recurring costs versus non-recurring. I think, I think your budget does call those out, because uh, those also relate to why we're, uh, looking at spending well over five million dollars and running a deficit this year as opposed to our regular recurring budget, which is the one that then, uh, comes back to, um, to our safety balance that we need to keep for our one-year balance. Um, the other issue that I wanted, uh, that I had brought up last time, I don't see it addressed in here. Um, and I really want to make sure that we have it and that there's narrative on this in your, uh, report as well as, as various asterisks and callouts on it. Uh, and that is, what of these items, um, are real and what are imaginary or hoped for? Um, and I'm speaking specifically to, um, things like the federal grants. Uh, if a federal grant has been received or is irrevocably promised, uh, identify it as such. If it's pending, break it out as pending, how much of, of each is each, each item there? Um, and then I'm also looking for from staff on our, uh, budget as we come in to potentially approving a budget. Um, correlating those, uh, things that are imaginary or not yet confirmed with projects that can be, uh, provisionally approved pending those becoming real. Uh, but certainly, uh, we wouldn't want to go, and I'm just using this as an example. We don't want to commit to putting in X number of, of hundreds of thousands of dollars on the Highway Nine project until the commitment is there that that money, uh, is arriving on a date certain, and then we put it out to bid and, and approve the project. So we, I need to see those tied together and to know if things don't come in, um, what is staged in the bu- budget or sacrificed when we make a mid-year adjustment. Now, I want to make sure that we're really clear on that as we, as we approve the budget.
Okay. I will update that matrix for that.
Thanks. And, uh, so those are my comments. And, uh, I, I do want to say thank you very much for the, uh, report you did here. The comparison is super helpful and super clear to me. So thank you so much for doing great work on what you did, uh, coming from the last one to this one. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, anything else, uh, possibly Luton? Then, uh, we'll put a make a check, please go ahead.
I was just gonna say, uh, council member Luthold, if you look at the very last page, uh, where it's, um, and perhaps, uh, Reynolds, you could scroll to the very last page. Is that?
Oh, that's, uh, you mean the CI, the one that shows the CIP?
Yeah, it shows the general fund and then the, the other.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let me call that up.
Cause I, I think that that would be very helpful.
Do you want fourteen of fourteen, uh, Mayor Broten?
No, it's, uh, it's another.
It's i- in the packet, it's page ninety-eight of ninety-eight.
Yeah, it's the last one here. Let's see. Post-second proposal, CIP.
I guess my back can only go from ninety-seven.
There, is this the report you're referring to?
Uh, that is, that's it, yes.
Okay, let me make it bigger so that we can see it. Can everyone read this?
Uh, if, if you, uh, close that triangle on the right, you'll get more real, real estate, getting rid of the, it down. Oh, no, no, move your cursor down. That's it. Click that.
How's that? Is that better?
Yep. Uh, council member Luthold, could you scroll down just a little bit? And then council member Luthold, I think this kinda will help a little bit. There you go.
Yeah, so going on the heels of what, um, council member Lithold said is, you know, really identifying the quality of all these, uh, revenue streams that'll pay for these projects. And I understand, you know, when he was talking like this one, for example, we do know that's, uh, that certain, um, measures that the engineer, uh, city engineer has identified. We know like in the, in these two figures here, we know that it's related to the relief funding, uh, which, uh, totals eight hundred ten. We know we got half of it already in this fiscal year. In the next fiscal year, we'll get the rest of that. So, you know, we can articulate those items relating to this. And then the balance of, uh, like two hundred eighty-eight, uh, is unidentified, um, for, for this, for these two combined projects. And then, again, going through that list of where all these other source revenues are coming from, that's going to pay for these projects. I think that's, uh, a list that I can certainly update. That'll show, here's a certainty of getting these funds, uh, and here's the probability of getting another, or perhaps, uh, here's a grant application that the staff has applied for and we're petting, we're pending, um, uh, notice on whether we are granted or awarded that particular grant. Is that something in the lines that you're looking for?
You know, that's, that's what I'm looking for is to, to really have that breakout as well, um, between the revenue and like you say, the, the certainty, uh, or uncertainty of that revenue and then what it's tied to and how we, as a city, are planning to stage our decision-making. Excuse me, so that we would be looking at saying, okay, well, we've got X number of dollars for the annex. We're looking at, um, at, at bids on that and, um, we're looking at making a commitment on the annex, for example. Whereas, um, Highway Nine, uh, we're going to hold off until we see certain things, uh, coming in, uh, before that goes out for bid. Um, if that's what, uh, staff would be proposing for us or telling us kind of, uh, how we would manage that so that we're not committing funds and then surprising ourselves that our revenues have not come in. And then surprising ourselves that our revenues have not come in at the five point three. It's one thing to approve the, the budget with the deficit of four hundred knowingly. But we certainly don't want to approve it with a deficit of four hundred and end up with a deficit of eight hundred.
Absolutely. Okay. I will create a matrix that would bring greater transparency to address that.
Yeah, please do that. And I, Councilmember Turner has another question. Please go ahead.
Yes, I, I have another question for you, Mr. Summer on us, if you don't mind. This eighteen thousand that you have in there? That is from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so that one thousand nine hundred eighty, one thousand nine hundred eighty-six hundred. That is confirmed for the annex, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then the general fund down below is three hundred eighty-three, four hundred in the red.
That's correct. That means we will be drawing down from our fund reserves.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Councilmember Turner?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So it, it, yeah, it sounds like you're really moving forward on this. My suggestion is do listen to the recording of our last meeting, because I think we had some of the same questions we have on this one. You've clarified some of that, but there's more questions. And I don't know if you are not doing more heading because you want to try to fit all of it on one page or not, because some of the items are fairly, fairly big. And I, I, I think you explained them other places. Like trying to put the sales tax and federal funds together. So my suggestion would be anytime you were a hundred thousand or any meaningful number. Try to see if you can break it out a little bit more and have it clarified. But please do listen to the recording of the last minute and the questions we were asking you and of this meeting. And hopefully we'll, we'll get there. So it's, it's a complicated process. So thank you for doing it and bringing this to our attention. Any other questions of staff at this point? If not, I will go to the public to see if anybody individual has any other questions. Yeah. Do we have any hands up from? Okay, we'll bring it back to council for discussion, comments. Anybody have any comments or anything else we need to add? If not, I guess I will ask Mr. Summer on us, did we give you enough input to know what you need to know? Or do you have any other things you expect us to?
No, no, I think there's clarity there. And if I'm confused, I'll go back to the tape.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, so that, that pretty much does it for our regular agenda items. And we are now going to adjourn to closed session for a conference with labor negotiators. And I think Mr. Rudin sent out a link for his closed session. So if you can all go to that, so we'll close out the open session. We'll come back to it. I suspect within about thirty minutes or so, or maybe a little bit sooner than that. So let's leave this session and go to closed session.
All right, that was pretty quick. I guess council member Turner isn't back yet, but so if you were a minute or two.
All right, I think we can probably get started and she can join us as she comes in. We do have quorum. First item on the, so we're back to open session from closed session. As far as the closed session is concerned, at this time, we have nothing to report as to what happened in the closed session. We'll reconvene to open session. And that's what we've just done and taken a report that there's nothing that we need to disclose at this time. We're now at the committee commission reports. So I would start with the mayor for time, make a check, see if he wants to enlighten us with any committee reports. You can report on all your committees at the same time.
Sure. Okay, so where I'm the the backup, the alternate, I haven't done anything on the, on the first two going down clean energy. We had a finance committee meeting and there's nothing to report there per se. And then scrolling down solid waste, we're continuing with the RFP request for, for proposal, and that's going along as per schedule. And then on the clean water going up, there's changes that are going to be underway. There's nothing to report there. And then I think that's, oh, I'm sorry, the VTA, there's a meeting next week on that. So I'll be able to report at the June 24th meeting. I would like to make some other comments and say that I had hosted Don Roca's visit to the annex building. And he took some notes. I met him there on a Friday afternoon. And he's setting up a meeting with some more of the clean, sorry, of the Valley Water executives. He is very excited and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I would be looking, I, we would be, I explained to him that we would be looking for a financial contribution in a number of different forms. So that's all proceeding well, and I'm, I'm happy with that. Those are, those are my reports.
Excellent. I'm just going to add on to your Silicon Valley clean energy report. I think there's another grant proposal that they put out. And there was a letter that came, email came out this week regarding that. So you may have seen that Mr. Make check. So we may need follow up on that one.
I, I have not seen that. I'll, I'll speak with you outside of this as to what I can do.
Sounds good. All right. Then we go back to Councilor Luthold.
Yeah, I attended the JPA for the library. To keep it brief, everything remains great at our local libraries. And their budget is in great shape. Their management is in great shape. They have a wonderful staff there. And really, actually, anybody who has the opportunity to watch any of their meetings with Mr. Wasserman in charge. It's certainly also great to watch him run in, run his meetings. If you haven't seen him in any of his other roles. Definitely something, it's something to watch how efficiently he conducts the meeting. And yet everybody is always heard. So anyway, and very enjoyable to have such good news, have such great libraries. They really want people to use the services, lots of e-services, lots of benefits for people. Things like meditation apps and so forth. Really, it's a top system we've got. Take advantage of it and spread the word.
Yeah, it really is an excellent system. Like I can borrow any book almost from the library on your iPhone and read it. So you read, I, I don't know why you have to buy books anymore. Most of the books are reliable. So that's a great system. Customer turner is not here. So I guess I, I, what I need to add is the West Valley mayors and managers. They met for the first time in person. There's a luncheon meeting at Tina Wally, who's the Saratoga mayor, who's now the mayor of the the lead on, on this particular thing. General discussion about how things were going in each city. The issues that, that were being faced by each city. So that was helpful. And yeah, so that, that's basically my, my meeting. Is there anybody else who wants to talk about anything else? Council member comments, I guess we gave reports. So any council member wants to give comments on any particular subject. Now's a good time. All right. Looks like you guys are out of breath after the call session. So we will go ahead and and call some of our comments. And I think that's the last item on the agenda. Oh, future city manager's report, we don't have the city manager here, but I think Ms. Perkins is supposed to be substituting for our city manager at this time.
It doesn't look like she's on the line either.
Okay, so we don't have a city manager report and Michelle, would you like to give any reports? Nothing to report. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any items that need to be, anybody wants to place on a future agenda? Okay, I guess we will read it, John. Thank you very much for your time.
Um, one, yeah, good. One thing. So our city planner is going to contact the ad hoc committee. And if you would like to set something up, I'm not sure what your time is like next week. Council member Luther, but I am around. And then I have one question, if it's okay to ask the question. And the question is, do, does the ad hoc committee have to meet with the city planner at the same time? Or, or can, can council member Luther meet with the city planner and then I meet with the city planner just so that we can move reasonably quickly on this. What? I, I'm not sure, council member Luther, how you would expect this to work.
Yeah. Well, mostly I want to make sure we don't burden staff with things like separate meetings, but efficiency is key. So let's see if we can coordinate. I can host Zoom calls. Potentially if we wanted to set up with all of us, site and architecture and you and me and city planner. I'm happy to do that. Or obviously we can do it individually, but if four of us are approaching the city planner separately. I'm just concerned about the burden on her. So, but I also don't want to hold back while we try to herd the cats. So I, I do want to make sure that we're moving quickly, that we as a group know what we want to accomplish in terms of putting an FAQ together and using EMC to help us or not, if we want to take some of the laboring or ourselves save some money and do this ourselves. So let's coordinate on that quickly. And, and just make sure that we get it taken care of. We can reach out to Ms. Perkins as well and find out if she's available after 5pm. That's always better for me, but if staff wants to stick to eight to five hours, I'll accommodate that.
All right. Sounds, sounds good. It sounds like, yeah, you'd be good to get zoomed with all four of you guys on there and Miss Perkins. But and, and you guys are sore under the gun because I'm trying to get this done when we meet all other timelines. But I couldn't think of better people to do it than you two. So good luck. All right. Anything else? Any other comments before we sign off?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, and because I'm, I'm a reporter, I can check. We do have a meeting Wednesday with Ali, right?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Confirmed. Okay.
That's tomorrow.
I'll see you then.
Yep. Okay. Thanks. Bye, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Appreciate your help.